Okay, before we call the meeting to Oatswood, we're going to have a public hearing first.
Yes.
Okay. We have a public hearing to discuss the zoning code amendment to address cellular phone towers. Zach?
Yes, a public hearing was advertised for tonight for any public or council comment on an amendment to the zoning code. Council previously authorized me to research the amending of the zoning code to address the siting and other standards in relation to cellular phone towers. Currently as it exists in this town, your traditional tower-based cell phone apparatuses are permitted in the light and general industrial zone districts. They do not address any of the new technological advances that have happened since whenever that ordinance was enacted, which would address your non-traditional, non-tower-based cellular phone applications such as putting up a razor antennas on top of light poles, utility poles, things of that nature. This is becoming a concern for municipalities because the nature in which people use their cell phones has changed dramatically over the past five or 10 years as has technology. And mainly what it's in regard to is the densely populated areas of boroughs and cities, in particular the main routes through those roads or through those municipalities where there's stoplights and people waiting. There's an increased use of bandwidth for data. So these mobile service providers are starting to construct these smaller antenna arrays along those high-usage areas so that the rest of the bandwidth doesn't get overtaxed from other people in the area. We do not have any zoning to address those currently. So at the last meeting, it was authorized to have a hearing tonight to address an update to the zoning code. To that end, I've been working on proposed ordinance, which the draft has been circulated to council. And the purpose of this hearing tonight is to allow for council to provide any sort of input that they would like into the ordinance that's going to be created, and also to allow for the public to provide any comments or input that they may have into the update to the zoning code.
At this time, are there any public comments? Okay, if there are none, then we'll close the public meeting. Okay, Zach?
Yeah, if council has any comments that they'd like to provide during this meeting, then we can, excuse me, we can conclude the meeting.
Council anything? Okay, public hearing's closed. I'll call to order the December 12, 2016 Latrobe City Council meeting. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will ask now for a moment of silence to ask for guidance, to give thanks, or to just quietly relax. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Buck. Mr. Bartels?
Here.
Mr. Murpham?
Here.
Mrs. Weller?
Here.
Mr. Forge?
Here.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Here.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.
Mayor Wolford?
Here.
All present. At this time today? At this time today, I have approval from the November 14, 2006 minutes of that meeting.
I know the minutes of the November 14, 2016 meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for their reading and inspection due any.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second the motion.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, could I have approval of the fiscal department reports and pay bills for the month of November 14, 2016? May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Beazey. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scipori, you have any questions?
Mr. Buck, when everything was done?
I want to welcome and acknowledge our former deputy mayor sitting back there, and also our former solicitor, Mr. Kelly. Nice to see you both. Welcome. Sorry, Mike, I couldn't help myself.
I know.
Yeah, I figured you did. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have our citizens' request portion of the meeting to deal with items that are on the agenda. Are there any comments from the residents? Any citizens' requests or comments relative to the agenda? Going once, going twice, moving on. Any committee reports? Finance, we have the budget here tonight to approve. We'll let Wayne talk about that a little bit further on down. If anyone has any questions other than that, I have nothing on the finance. Julie, do you have anything? Public safety and public works. Guys, y'all, anybody have anything? Personnel?
Nothing.
Nothing. Events committee?
Nothing.
Parking committee?
There'll be a meeting on Wednesday of the parking authority, and hopefully the members of the committee can meet with the parking authority during their vote. 4:30. Yeah, 4:30 on Wednesday.
I think we talked about this a little bit before, because one of the things we talked about was having the parking committee take a look with, Wayne's going to be running some numbers to see, you know, really, if we just look at the parking, how much are we taking in? What are our costs? You know, are we making any money? Are we breaking even? You know, maybe make some recommendations going forward if there are some options or ways we want to look at it, depending on if we're making any money.
And Wednesday, the authority's going to vote whether or not to terminate.
And then we can move on from there. So if they vote to terminate, then the city takes responsibility then for all the parking. We always had parking on the street. They had the bull lots. They had the parking in the mall.
Correct.
Okay. Anything on the showcase, guys?
I emailed Judy, spoke to her when she was here, and emailed her to get together, but she hasn't responded.
Okay.
Said it again.
Okay. Any board and authority reports? Skip, anything from Alman?
No.
Your meeting minutes from parking record in your packet. Department reports, public works, Mike?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Told you, it's going to be fast. Chief Boomer?
Nothing to report.
Chief Brazili?
Present.
Ann?
I guess I have nothing.
You don't have to be intimidated into having nothing. Do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. All right, Zach, you're up.
I'm going to start. The first item on the agenda under administration and finance is approving the 2017 budget ordinance in the amount of $5,524,900. As was discussed during the agenda session, the budget for fiscal year 2017 is a balanced budget, like I said, in the amount of $5,524,900. The budget was appropriately advertised for public inspection and has been available for public inspection, and assuming that it's passed, there will be a post-enactment notice. The appropriate action would be to make a motion to approve the 2017 budget ordinance as outlined by the solicitor.
And may I just make the comment that that budget does not include a tax increase, so it's a balanced budget without a tax increase. Do I need to say a couple more times? May I have a motion to enact the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make the motion to enact the ordinance outlined by the solicitor.
Thank you. Mr. Bartels, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Baldmarry. Any questions or discussion?
Just to confirm again that we did add those other two items.
We did. We added the $30,000 line item for community revitalization and the $10,000 line item for the NSLA. And we're still balanced with no tax increases.
Right, it's still a little bit going into capital reserve.
And some going into capital reserves, yes. Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2016-10. Forge?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Murpham?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Those seven yes. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two, Zach?
Item number two is to approve the 2017 tax ordinance. I'd like to reiterate that the taxes will not be going up this year.
We can't say that enough.
No, we cannot. For 2017 fiscal year, the general city purposes tax rate will be 21.30 mil. The Adams Memorial Library will be .20 mil as approved by both the electorate in 1953 for a total mileage of 21.50, again not going up from last year. The appropriate action to take would be to make a motion to approve the 2017 tax ordinance as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Baldmarry. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any question? Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2016-11. Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Murpham?
Yes.
Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Those seven yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Item number three on the agenda is approving the sale of the fire truck, the company number three, for a dollar. As you were called from the agenda session, free will those company number three and four of Latrobe, PA to acquire the 1978 American LeFrank fire engine. The fire engine has been used by said fire company, however, was titled in the name of the city. This resolution is to authorize the city to transfer title of the fire engine from the city to free will those fire company number three and number four of Latrobe, Pennsylvania. And their purpose is to purchase a new truck and to use the sale proceeds from this truck to finance that truck. Again, the appropriate action would be to make a motion to approve the resolution.
May I have a motion, please, to approve?
I'll make that. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Beazey. Second?
Second.
Mr. Bartels, thank you. Any questions or discussion? We did talk about this at the agenda meeting. Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2016-41. Excuse me, Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Murpham?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Those seven yes.
Item number four on the agenda is approving the city manager to apply for a second multi-modal grant application for the underpass repair and additional paving. This is an action item of the resolution to apply to the multi-modal transportation fund for a grant in the amount of $100,000 specifically used for the improvement of Norfolk Southern Railroad underpasses located at Jefferson Street, Ligonier Street, and South Alexandria Street. Again, the appropriate action would be to make a motion to approve the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Murpham, may I have a second, please?
I'll second, Madam.
Thank you, Mr. Forge. Any questions or discussion? It's another item we talked about at the agenda prep. If there's no questions, Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2016-42. Mr. Murpham?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Those seven yes.
Item number five, again, as was addressed during the agenda session, the time has come for the city engineer to apply for funding through the Community Development and Block Grant Program for the program year 2017. This is a motion item. A specific motion to make would be to authorize Gibson Thomas Engineering to apply for funding through the Community Development and Block Grant Program for program year 2017.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck, this is motion.
All motions.
Oh, the rest are all motions. I'm sorry. I wasn't paying attention. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I was reading something.
Go ahead.
Item number six concerns the fire pit update to the zoning code. As was discussed during the agenda session, it was determined that it would be prudent to send both drafts of our proposed ordinance, one with just natural gas and charcoal, and the other allowing for wood burning, to the county for review under the municipality's planning code. I have taken action, so the motion would be to ratify the providing of both variants of small recreational fire ordinance to the county for review under the Pennsylvania municipality's planning code.
Hey, may I have a motion, sir?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Yeah. Did you guys get a copy of that, chief?
Yes.
That was, Jim?
The counties, I didn't. I got Zach sent me an email.
Yes, the same one?
The same one.
Yes.
We sent both to the county, and then our assumption is that they'll okay both.
They'll probably ignore us, but yeah.
Okay, or that they'll ignore us. And then if we decide on one, or whichever one we decide, we will already gotten approval, correct?
Yes, the purpose of this was to make the process more quick.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item on the agenda is to authorize the city manager to submit his letter of support and to participate as a coalition member as part of the redevelopment authority of Westmoreland County. Wayne can speak more to this than I could. However, the motion would be to confirm the city of Latrobe's membership in the Brownfield Mitigation Committee and designating the redevelopment authority of Westmoreland County as the city's agent for any and all duties under the application form and future grant awards issued by or under the United States Environmental Protection Agency.
Can I have a motion to authorize the city manager to submit a letter?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forge, thank you. Any questions or discussions? This is standard operating.
Second here.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item number eight concerns free on-street parking during the holiday season, specifically during the agenda session. It was discussed that free on-street parking in the city from the 15th through the 31st. As such, the appropriate motion would be to authorize free on-street parking in the city of Latrobe from December 15, 2016 through December 31, 2016.
May I have a motion to authorize free parking from December 15 to December 31?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Baldmarry. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Items number nine and number 10 are somewhat related, so I'll address them in total together and then we can go on each motion. Provided council a memorandum on December 8 concerning tax assessment appeals on these three parcels. Specifically, the first one has to do with a property owned by SPP and is currently being operated as a Rite Aid location. With both of these properties, the school district filed a variety of tax assessment appeals at the beginning of the fiscal year, four of which concerned the city. One has already been approved by the city to be settled. The other three tax assessment appeals have come to settlement terms. One of those tax assessment appeals, item number 10, is an ARC property, which is two parcels that are actually operated as one Citizens Bank facility. It was consolidated by Judge Marsely to make it easier to resolve. School district council is recommending to the school district that they likewise approve the settlement. I've reviewed the settlement proposals in both of the cases, and as detailed in my ordinance, I would recommend that council approve the settlement in both of these as they increase the tax assessment value for the properties, increasing city tax revenue, and we wouldn't have to go through the expense of litigating the case. So the first item, which is actually item number 10 on the agenda, is a motion item to authorize the city solicitor to execute all settlement documentation in the tax assessment appeal doctored as 6132 of 2015 with the Westmoreland County Court of Common Reason.
May I have a motion to authorize the city solicitor to execute all settlement documents?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Beazey. May I have a second, please?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Forge. Any questions or discussion?
I'll start.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I, should I just go on, or do you have more?
No, I was just kidding.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve a settlement in the tax assessment appeal for, this would be the SPP property?
No, the second one is the ARC property, which is the Citizens Bank is the second one.
Okay. We just did the ARC property then? Because I thought we did 10.
That's what I thought you said.
Yeah.
I thought you said go on number 10.
10's the ARC.
Oh, well, if that's what I said, then we can go with that.
Okay, now, that was for the ARC property, number 10, on the agenda. This is for number nine on the agenda. A motion to authorize the city solicitor to execute all settlement document for the SPP property. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That's it. Lot of items on there. We did good. Any unfinished business? Do you want to talk about this? Or under new business? Do you want to share this? I think it'd be great. But first of all, is there any unfinished business that any member of council or city manager has yet?
Just had a question from Mike. Mike has the fleet for snow removal this year. Did we get the new truck?
Well, no, we didn't get the new truck yet. We also had another breakdown over the weekend for a 1995 freight liner, FL-70, that hit the gasket when. So, you know, we're still able to run it, you know, until we come up with an ideal replacement on that truck. But we do have the other truck, the combination truck that we were talking about. It is in the process of, you know, getting built, pending the approval of, you know, council to purchase the truck.
Well, weren't we supposed to have one this year, a new truck? Because I asked about this in July.
We got one.
Yep.
We got a new one. We got one.
We got one, and a small truck. We can't, couldn't do the budget, and we have to get a plan.
But we bought one last, earlier this year, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's.
Yes.
Any suggestion I have on that is maybe get a picture of it in the paper so people know where the cash money's going, especially when a new vehicle comes in the town.
Yeah, we actually would be good to advertise it because it's going to be a little different with the 10 cubic yard box, and we won't definitely get that up very often. So we will do some advertising on that.
So how many snow removal vehicles do you have?
In the fleet, I have a total of three. And like I said, this past weekend, we just had one, you know, had given some problems. You know, that one, this new vehicle would replace, so that would give us, you know, a total of three again, so.
The new one was smaller. They're smaller trucks, so, and it's nice to have something about 20 years old.
Right.
You can't really. Yeah, you can't afford, you know, the larger the trucks, they run approximately twice the amount of money of one of these smaller trucks. So now, you know, we're able to get two of the trucks for the price of one.
So you don't plan on fixing this one that you just went out?
We got to get an estimate on what it's going to cost to repair that. Our mechanics on that type of work, they're not sure if they can do it. The other issue is since it's so old, not sure what other problems we're going to run into. If the pistons are bad, if it's going to be a complete overhaul. The truck's in pretty bad shape to begin with, so.
It may not make sense. So what's the lead time once we authorize for another one?
Well, they're actually, they're actually building it, so, you know.
Why did we do that tonight?
Well, we have to get financing, and I want to make sure we got budget program for that financing.
Okay.
And we'll get it.
I understand it's in next year's budget, but we can do it, can we do it retroactively?
Let me get some financing on it, and we'll get it right.
All right. I don't want to wait till January to order, if you're telling me we already ordered two.
Well, we told them, tend to, we would take it based on the council of course.
Okay. So my question stands, when do we think we'll get it?
You know, the truck, I think we'll get it ahead of schedule, probably in the first or second week of January.
Oh, that would be nice.
Yeah.
Before the council meeting where we approve it.
Correct, correct.
Oh, well.
I could have another toy.
It's an emergency, yeah.
It is an emergency vehicle.
And it's in the budget. Okay, any other unfinished business?
Did you find anything out about James Street, about the chip on? Did you hear when I mentioned about it?
No, no, I missed the agenda meeting.
James Street from Lincoln Avenue, kind of like, like it didn't, they didn't put enough bar down or something?
No, I wasn't aware of that. We have the inspector coming out from Russell Standards. Should be coming out sometime this week. We're going to look at every street, you know, to see if there's any problems, or if it's anything that's dealing with the replication of it, of the reason. Now, I didn't, you're talking about the bottom section of James Street?
From Lincoln Avenue.
Okay, just right up from Lincoln. Now, the stone is still, actually still embedded in the road. A lot of it, it just, the stone got crumbled, and so it's looking like it's almost like a modified finish to it. Now.
It was a little bit loose, though, because I haven't run that.
It was still loose? Okay. I will check on it tomorrow, and I will contact Russell Standard, and we're going to take a look at that. So we're going to take care of it.
Yeah, there was also an issue on with Deborah that I got a call about that Mike told me about, and when the inspector comes in, they're going to go take over that as well. Any other unfinished business items? New business? Any new business? I'm going to let Christine talk a little bit about this mental health first aid certification.
I'm in the leadership of Westmoreland program, and our small group has been, has decided to promote this mental health first aid certification course. And it is really a nice program. It's offered through Wixie and Greensburg. Studies show that you will use mental health first aid training more frequently than you will CPR. It's becoming an increased problem in our area with mental health issues. This course, you know, I took registered nurses to, and they were able to bring something away from it. So it's a really nice program that focuses specifically on mental health issues as well as ways to know what to do for suicide prevention, contact information, places to go if you need help. So I encourage everyone to take the course, and if you have any questions, let me know. Michelle Keller is the contact down at Wixie, and there is a fee, but it is, you know, they've been having a right to people so that we can get more people signed up to take the course. So like I said, if you have any questions, let me know. And there is an article in the Tribune Review, there was one yesterday in the Westmoreland section. So if you want to look that up, it does talk a little bit more about details about the program. But it's a really nice, it's a nice program.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
Anything else for under new business? Are there any other comments from the residents? Any other citizens' request issues about anything? Yes, Mr. Scipora?
I would just like to say, capital of the free will is coming free for, thank council for signing over the title from our 1978 American LeFrank engine so that we can purchase our 2001 Seagrave engine up there. I don't know if you signed anything in the paper about East Huntington County. If East Huntington County just purchased a brand-new Seagrave for $554,000, but we purchased our 2001 Seagrave for just under $90,000, and there's only 1,050 pump hours, which is very, very young, the fire engine. So I think we did a pretty good job there, but I want to thank council for signing over the title of the old engine three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scipora. Anything else? City manager, Fort Wayne, you have anything?
No, for the point of Bradley, I have nothing to say.
Well, I do.
All right.
But I'll keep it short. I just want to say, you know, it's been a great year. We've had a really good year in the city. I think we've seen a lot of positive improvements, a lot of good energy and enthusiasm. Looking forward to 2017. forward to 2017, but I want to take this opportunity to recognize and to thank the city employees and the staff, the police departments, fire departments. It is because of you that this is a place where people want to come and visit and come and live because you keep it safe, you keep us all safe, you keep the roads clean, you keep, you know, you do a great job, and the pride that we all share in the city of Latrobe, I think, is seen by many, many people. There's a lot of places that I go, and when I tell people I'm from Latrobe, they know about it, and more than, more often than not, people will say to me, you have quite a nice little town there, and we do, and it is because of the people that come in here day after day after day and put their hearts and soul into this community. So on behalf of myself and the members of city council, I want to thank you all. I want to wish you a very Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Aye.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, deputy mayor. May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.